So I found out tomorrow is somebody's birthday.
Ah.
He's gonna be fifty years old.
Let's not put that on record at all.
So I thought to celebrate, maybe we'll have Garrett sing to himself, "Happy Birthday." That's okay. I mean, listen, but I know Garrett, he's been on quite a few, the planning zoning, the city council. He's a dad, he's a good person all the way around. You just get a little hot-headed, but that's coming with age, I understand. So I do have some fat boys I'll pass around, and I even got the retail instead of seconds. That's how much we like it, Garrett, so.
I would have been all right with seconds, that's what I buy.
I'll go grab them, we'll pass around to everybody and then.
Oh, happy birthday tomorrow, Garrett.
I think we should sing, I'm up for it.
I'm trying to forget.
Do you think Norm would mind if we, he'll get back in here, ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Garrett. Happy birthday to you.
That's a good key for all.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Norm. The guys are too kind. All right, good job.
Happy birthday.
With that, I'll call the meeting to order and start with a roll call if we could. When a couple of council members heard that we were changing the agenda, they decided not to come on time. So. No, actually, Kay is in Pennsylvania with the new grandbaby, and Norm, Nate will be here shortly. So we've got a quorum, let's get going with you, please, Aaron.
Yeah, Aaron Mann.
Aaron Mansell.
Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson.
Yegor Roberts.
Jeff Moore.
Tom Dickinson, City Attorney, Chad Wright. City Attorney, City Engineer, that's a D motion right there. City Engineer, you want to negotiate this? And Chad Wright, Recreation Director, and the other two are guests, thank you for coming, and I will introduce you at the appropriate point on the agenda. Thanks for coming. So with that, Council, if you turn your attention to our last minute, set of minutes, and tonight's agenda, before you make a motion on the agenda, I actually have a request that you would swap. Items.
Five and six?
Five and six, thank you, Norm.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes and the agenda with rotating five and six.
Okay, motion to approve minutes and amended agenda, second from Garrett, thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes three zero, perfect. With that, we have our public comment period. We have a Nibley resident here, I think you could wear either hat you wanted. Okay. And since we, Catherine, so you, so you know, since we got bombed on Zoom a few times, we do YouTube broadcasts of these, but people don't get to comment remotely anymore. Inappropriate scrawlings on the screen.
Language.
Language. It was on the record in a planning and zoning meeting, and we should hold on to that and put it right next to the, to the ultimate frisbee jerseys. I'll say, what's going on in Nibley? I think that's a happening place.
Who's running that town?
Justin. Okay, with that, we will open the public comment period and give anyone a chance to speak to the council about anything they would like to address. Seeing no public comments, seeing no one signed up, with council's permission, we'll close the public comment period. No objection, that's closed. Next, we'll catch up to, here we go, this will be our Cache County Council report from our own Catherine Buse. We miss you, Catherine, thanks for coming back to talk to us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you, Brett, I appreciate it, thanks for switching with me. Um, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. One of the goals that I set at the beginning of this year with my council, with my county council was, I wanted to go to each of the municipalities and, and work with, with each of the councils to set some goals and just to collaborate with them so that they knew what I was working on and what we were working on as a county council, and just to see how I could best advocate for them on the county, on the county level. So I have a brief PowerPoint that I put together of some of the current things that we're working on and to keep you abreast of that information, then and kind of get some feedback from you of what I could, what I can help Nibley City with. So go ahead, Justin, if you could advance the slide. So most recently, I think, and of great interest in Nibley City is that we recently approved, and it's not a done deal, but we recently approved some matching funds to go to purchase a conservation easement at the Elkhorn Ranch. So this is the Furman property, and it's a hundred and fifteen acres that is outlined in red. So there is an existing conservation easement that exists on this land, but the outline, that portion that's outlined in red is what was presented and what was approved by the county council for the bond, using the twenty million dollar bond that was approved on the last election cycle for open space conservation, to purchase conservation easements. So that was in the last meeting, and the, you see the parcel numbers, a really small writing on the corner, but the out, the, on the left side of the screen, there's a few parcels, and then there's some that goes down through the middle. Unfortunately, we have not settled the issue of trail access, and don't know if we're going to get anywhere right now with the issue of trail access, if I'm honest, right now. So I think the most that we're going to get with the current landowner is that we will not get any type of title exclusion of trail access, because I think as far as we're going to get as of right now. And the funding that, so as the process goes for this, is that he is, is using our funds to be matching funds to go and get federal funding, NRCS. I don't know exactly what that acronym stands for, but it's a national funding for ag, for ag conservation, and he's going to use that to go in and match that funding to go in, again, an easement. So that, from my understanding, is discussions outside of, of the applicant. They can't have the trail negotiations at this time with that application. So that would, if, with that, having such stringent ag use on it, that having the trail negotiations right now would, would exclude it from being eligible, is what I, I confirmed with multiple sources right now. So it's on hold. Justin.
So is it, remind me, the dollar amount, is it a million bucks?
The amount that the council committed from our bond was one point two five.
One point two five.
And we've encouraged him to go to the Lee Ray McAllister Fund to get an additional quarter million dollars, to get him up to, the NRCS is two point five, I think.
Thank you.
They're spending the total amount on this project, and they're seeking more, is what it sounds like.
What was that, Norm?
They're spending the total amount, the one point five on this, on single parcel, or these parcels?
On the hundred and fifteen acres.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's more than that in the twenty million that was the open, open space bond. Okay. That's what we took on as citizens of Cache County's twenty million dollar debt.
Yeah, this is just, this is the first application that we've actually advanced to this stage.
Okay.
So, yeah.
How much did you say the Lee Ray was?
I don't have it ish, it's, so it's, it's like two point something, yeah. It's, let me see if I can do the math in my head real quick. He's donating six hundred thousand, we gave one point five, they're asking for another, it's maybe two point five million is the NRCS.
And he's putting in six point six?
Six hundred thousand is his donation, is the, is the landowner's donation.
Like donating to himself.
Donating, right.
Right.
Yeah.
So you have any advice for us in terms of political leverage that we could try from this bench to say, you know, seems like that trail's pretty important, I mean, fold that into, right? So here's, here's four million dollars, four million that we're gonna get, three point eight from UDOT for the Blacksmith Fork River Trail.
Yeah.
So this is unheard of for UDOT to build, in my opinion, well, no, it's unheard of, it's never been done before, that UDOT, UDOT would actually commit money to building trails as opposed to building roads. And when I first heard about UDOT doing that, I think it's sixty million, something like that throughout the state.
Yeah, ninety the first year and then forty five.
Okay, thanks. And I said, wow, we'll never get any of that, and lo and behold, we are funded for the Blacksmith Fork River Trail, and, and do we not know, does UDOT know where they're gonna put that trail? Does, I'm sure you understand the gnarliness of this situation.
I understand, I feel like I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place, because I think the applicant has walked before, and I don't, he's an older gentleman, and I don't want this to pass with his passing either. I don't know, I feel like it's a.
Yeah, I mean, he can lock this down well beyond his own lifetime, is not having a trail on his property.
And that's why he hasn't included as like a deed restriction, that there shall never be a trail. And I think that's as good as we're gonna get with him. What is the expiration date on that funding with UDOT?
It's, it's awarded, I don't know, maybe, we could ask Landis.
We have to take into consideration, because we have the other landowner, Judge Vale.
Yeah, yeah.
Who is, by all accounts, unwilling himself to put in a trail. I think it's kind of, the whole thing is kind of gnarly along there, because we have the Stokes Nature Center, who would do a trail.
No, they won't.
They won't do a trail either?
No, we will, it's the next agenda of, next time about a development agreement, which, as I understand it, is to not follow our trail plan.
Oh. Um.
Can I ask a question then?
I mean, yeah, of course.
What we're getting here then is, he's gonna get one point five, or one point two five out of that county's twenty million dollar pot, plus this other funding stuff, just to keep this a farm, and let people look at it.
Viewscape.
What was the Open Space Committee's recommendation?
One point one million.
And to fund it without access?
They left the access as a question mark, yeah.
Okay, well.
And, and you know, our public, you know, Stephen Nelson, we all know Stephen Nelson well, he kind of tried to push to see if we could do a trail in the, in the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way that we have along Highway one sixty-five. I think that's still a possibility that no one really wants to talk about until we can kind of get this taken care of.
But if the county walks on the one point two five, while the rest of this goes away too.
Yeah, the NRCS funding is contingent upon matching funds.
We're already in the process, I mean, I read the news article that said it was a done deal.
So as far as the, the county, they will submit, the NRCS will have the application submitted in October.
Okay, but the county has said yes.
We have said yes.
Catherine, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
Is some of Joe Furman's land already in a conservation easement?
Yeah, so the, everything not outlined in red is an existing conservation.
Oh, okay, and it's just gonna cost that much money just to purchase a conservation easement protection for the rest of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so when it's all said and done, including the Stokes Nature Center that's over in that corner, I think it was gonna be something like two hundred and fifteen acres. That was gonna be the total. Any additional questions on this?
Oh, welcome back to Nibley, thanks for coming to talk to us. We didn't say we'd be easy on you. I, I think the news article that I read, by the way, said the land was in Nibley, and I'd be pleased if it were in Nibley, but it's not. It's in the unincorporated county.
Yeah, it's in the unincorporated.
I'm sure it'll stay there.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah.
There's no reason for Joe to come to Nibley.
There sure seems to be a lot of claims about Elkhorn Ranch.
About where it actually is?
It's right there, yeah, that is, that's his claim, but.
It was a big ranch, much bigger than any conservation easement.
Yeah, yeah. Um, go ahead, and you can, if there's no more questions, we'll go ahead and advance to the next slide.
Thanks for taking that head on, I appreciate it.
I, I wish that we could get all of the things that we want on this, but I do still count that as a win. The traffic count is twenty-five thousand vehicles that pass there every day. So I do think for Viewscape and open space, that it is a win, and I'm, and I'm really happy that we can maintain the open space. And go ahead and advance to the next screen, thank you. So right now, we are, so the Cache Fire District, this is a rabbit hole we could go down and stay down for a really long time, but I'm gonna give you a really high, a bird's eye view of what this is, but we have the Cache Fire District, and so that was established back in the seventies when these were still legal, and these are no longer.
Sixties?
Sixties, a long, way before my time, way, way before my time, Larry might remember. He was probably even old then.
End of the bench.
But, so the Cache Fire District was established then, but then nothing actually happened with it, but now we're, we're bringing that back and we're, we're drafting some bylaws. So I, as the current members of the Cache Fire Board, the Fire District Board, there's myself, the executive, and then Councilmember Erickson. And we're in the, in, in drafting the new bylaws, we are expanding that board to include three members of the north and three members of the south, with no more than three members of the Cache County Council, and the other members would consist of mayors from those respective areas. We really are hoping that we can include the municipalities and keep them in the board, in, in the district, so that we can, we can have this be a functioning district. And so what this might look like is myself, and, and maybe the mayor of Hiram, and, and the, the mayor of Wellsville, and then, you know, council member from the north, and, and another council member from the north, and a mayor or something, you know? And, and, and we're trying to just make sure that we can get the buy-in from, from all the municipalities and, and make this be a functioning, a functioning district, so we can serve all of, all of the district, so.
All cities?
No.
All that belong to the districts, that is, does not include Logan, for now.
By rule, it doesn't include Logan.
By rule, it does not include Logan, yeah. And the board will consist of, of this kind of makeup until Logan reaches like fifty-five, fifty-five thousand, I think, as a population, and then it will consist of just the Cache County Council. So we're thinking about a decade, so.
So Catherine, I think, thank you again for working on this, this is another difficult one. Logan City is not part of the Cache County Fire District, the Fire District by rule, but the Fire District is being funded by general fund for all, from all of Cache County, so.
Correct.
Logan City provides their own fire protection, and they're also funding the county fire protection, and they're not gonna pay for that twice anymore.
Right, right, so this budget year, I just don't think we're gonna be able to pull it out of the general fund right now, and luckily, Logan hasn't put up much of a stink of, about it, but definitely by next budget year, we will be pulling that out and having it be a separate item and not part of the general fund.
Will it be a?
Its own.
Tax?
Taxing entity, yeah, its own.
Taxing entity.
It's own taxing entity. So there's still a lot, this is really premature, but I'm just trying to keep you abreast of what we're doing right now, and our first step is to really get the, the board membership in place, so that we can get the municipalities in, and, and one, before we start making a lot of decisions.
Do you know what, yet, what will happen to things like the Smithfield Fire District, the Hiram Fire District that we rely on for fire protection? Will they be absorbed into this Fire District?
We are hoping that they will stay in it, yes. But we're, so we're at the very beginning stages of getting Zion's Bank Public Finance to do some financial, just studies of what that looks like with the current, current, like, it's, it's really messy, because we have a lot of assets that we need to look at, and who owns all of the assets, and the fee structures, and how currently the fees are being assessed, and making that, and changing it to be a, the taxing, but, by a taxing entity. So it is really a nuanced thing. So Zion's Bank Public Finance is gonna, we're doing an RFP, or we're asking them to do, I don't know if we're gonna do an RFP, but we're asking them to do a, a study.
Yeah, we have to come up with money to fund this district without half of the money that goes into
Yep.
fire protection now, because Logan won't have to pay, yeah, and they shouldn't have.
They shouldn't have to, yeah.
They have their own.
So, next.
Well, there's two.
Yeah, two fun ones, it's been so fun.
You got a happy one for us.
This is a really fun one, and I'm not being facetious, this one is really fun. Um, so I am on the selection committee on the decisioning board of RAPS, and this was our last year of RAPS payments to Nibley City for the Firefly Park. So what that means is that we, Nibley City was not allowed to apply for any additional projects, but next year, Nibley City can submit applications. I will give just some advice that the, the selection committee, as well as the council, has been a little soured on feasibility studies. So shovel-ready projects are going to be the most favorable and gonna be awarded. I would, if I could give you advice, I would, I would say that, do not just buckshot and see what sticks. That was, that was an, an attempt, I think, that was, the committee did not, did not like, nor did the council like. So we are working on the feasibility study for the indoor rec center. It's been a process. And I think I talked to Stephen today, and we, it's published on the website as of tomorrow, I think. The RFP will be on the website tomorrow.
And once, if I correct, the, once we get the RFP, and we see what the costs are, we still have to go back, likely.
Likely.
Get more money from.
Yeah.
Seventy-five thousand's committed, right, from RAPS tax?
With a surplus in our RAPS.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, we'll see if we can, if we can influence the council to, to fund that if there's gonna be a shortfall. Next. And then this is just some general county news, the, the county separated the role, the county auditor was the clerk auditor position, and now we have the role of the county auditor. Matt Funk is the pre, well, he's the presumptive, right, is that the right word? Presumptive, county auditor, starting his role on January first, twenty twenty-five. We're in the process of the, of doing our budget, we've given ourselves a deadline of mid-September, so we are on a separate, as I'm sure you know, we have a separate budget year as the, as the city, and ours is the fiscal, our fiscal year is the actual calendar year, and so we'll be setting our tax rate, and we're giving ourselves the deadline of mid-September, and we're waiting on benefits, our benefits. We're waiting on, um, benefits, um, our benefits. We're going to be self-funding. Uh, we're going to be starting, well, we're most likely be self-funding with our, um, uh, with our health insurance. And so we're, we're waiting on that and then, uh, finish getting all of our budget from the different departments and the staff. So.
Self-funding means the county would pay the costs of health insurance for employees without insurance up to a certain point? And then you have reinsurance that kicks in at that point?
Yep.
It's a great, great approach.
It's a really good approach and we, as we've seen the benefits of that, it, we think that it will be, um, a lot, wow, a lot. It'll be beneficial for us.
I mean, the insurance companies make money by writing insurance.
Yeah.
In the cash flow, you can keep that money.
Yeah, and we have consultants that are helping us with that and, and we see that, that it'll have some cost savings and benefits for us. So. Yeah, that's just some general news that we have at the county and, and I'm willing to take any questions that you have. I hope to do, I, I will be doing this annually. Um, I hope that you find this as a benefit just, and then if there's anything that you want to, from me as far as, as, as your representative on the county council, now is the time or anytime I, I hope that you feel comfortable reaching out to me to, to help, um, with anything that you need from the county council.
Thanks Catherine.
You're welcome.
We, we do miss you. And, uh, what can we do for you?
Um.
I mean, as a city or as citizens or, you know, you can reach out to us as well.
Oh, I feel like this is the fun one to come to. You guys are my friends.
I thought we were special because you were coming to talk on an agenda and then you just said you're going to everybody. So.
Well. I just, I hope that you feel that we have open communication, that anything you need, that you can reach out to me and I can help you with. And, and, um, I, uh, please, I know that, that we've had a rocky relationship historically and I'm speaking on behalf of, of, of all of the Cache County Council and, and municipalities is we just haven't always ha, worked out how things should run. And I don't want it to be that way. Waste management, I don't think went the way that it should have gone. I think the county should have taken more leadership on that as county government. We already had an entity that set up to do that and we didn't. And, and I, I want the Fire Board to work. I want these other things to work. And I think, um, I hope that we can be the leadership that we, we can provide the leadership that, that we need to, to have for those to work properly.
You know, those last two things lead me to make a request, right? And it's, it's not a request of you except to pass the message to the rest of the council. And that is whenever you get a chance, if you agree with it, this sentiment that the county council doesn't represent the unincorporated part of Cache County. The county council represents all of Cache County, even the municipal jurisdictions. We all pay the same county property tax, whether you're, we, we pay more tax in Nibley City to Nibley City, but we all pay the same county property tax. And so I think on a couple of those issues, and I think we can get past it, but there's an idea that seems like there are some council attitudes that the county council represents the unincorporated parts of Cache County because they have cities to take care of other things.
Right.
So, and I, I'm pretty sure you feel like you represent Nibley City citizens, um, in addition to people that live in other cities and don't live in any cities in Cache County.
Thank you. Yeah. And I feel like that's a, a sentiment that we need to all mirror.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Thanks Brett.
Thanks for helping us design the ultimate Frisbee jerseys. Redesign. Redesign.
Redesign.
Thanks for having me. I have yet to have a city ask for the assessor. I don't know if it's because our office is that uninteresting. So I just, I brought some things that I hope are interesting to you and then I'll answer some of your questions that maybe you asked through email or, and then you can, you can ask me whatever questions, but, um.
Brett, let me just introduce you. This is, this is Brett Robinson, our Cache County Assessor and elected physician in Cache County. And we very much appreciate you coming tonight to talk to us about assessing property values and whatever else you want to talk to us about.
Yeah, so I've been the assessor, um, just under two years. Um, I'm, I'm filling the, the second portion of Kathleen Howell's term. She was the previous for 32 years. I believe she'd been in that office for 47, but she'd been there forever. So I'm filling some big shoes. And I'm, I'm running unopposed this year, so that's kind of nice to, to run unopposed. I guess nobody else wants the job, so that's the, I don't know. It can be rough sometimes, but I brought some things I think will be interesting to you. Maybe you already know some of this, but this first page I thought would be interesting to you guys. I, I'm not as sophisticated as Catherine. Sorry, I didn't bring a PowerPoint. But the advantage to this is you'll be able to see firsthand and take this home. This first page, you can see that this is residential values history. So from 2000 to 2000 to present, 2024. And you can see the market value in 2000 of all of the parcels. All of the residential parcels was 76 million dollars. And that has grown to 1.1 billion if you add all of those parcels up. 940 acres. Um, the average home value now in Nibley is 488,000. In 2000, it was 138,000. So there's been a substantial increase in, in values there. Um, some people say that the assessor never comes down in value, but I want to point to 2009. It kind of peaked and then it came down, I think I'm reading this right, all the way to roughly 2014 and then resumed its upward journey to its present value. So it's kind of interesting to, to see, you know, those, those numbers. And you can, if there's any questions, I don't know, I don't know, jump in here.
Yeah, do you mind?
Sure.
Brett, thank you. Uh, 488,000 average market value residential.
Yeah.
What's, what does the rest of Cache County look like?
Um, that's a good question. Um, similar, similar.
Yeah.
I think the overall average is in the low 500s. I, I saw that number this morning as I was looking it over, but didn't think to bring it. So that's a good question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, if you flip the pages, this is maybe less interesting, but still interesting. It's commercial values over that same time period. So you can see that the market value of commercial properties has gone from a total of 5 million, 5.2 to 67 million dollars. And, uh, so, and, and there's, I mean, if you look at the parcel count of commercial, there was only 11 for years. And then it's ballooned to about 47 right now that are commercial properties in Nibley City. And the average has also increased. The thing that kind of skews this a little bit is things like Maloof that would skew some of those numbers. I don't think the average market value of a commercial property is 1.4, but that kind of gives you a, a rough idea. This third page is not mine. It's from the state I, I sent. Or, or I asked the question to somebody I know at the state and they sent some of this back, but it's kind of interesting. Similar kind of data, but, um, if you look at 2024, that bottom line, the taxable value. So, and, and I need to clarify something. Residential properties, as you probably know, if, and this doesn't exist, but if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, I guess I should use a million dollar because that's, that's more typical than a hundred thousand. But the taxable value on a hundred thousand dollar house is 55,000 of that gets taxed. The tax rate is applied to 55,000, not 100,000, but commercial properties, the tax rate is applied to the whole 100,000 dollars. So this value here, the 760 million is the taxable value. So the total is much higher than that. But, um, the next couple of lines there are much smaller numbers, but property taxable value, so, or personal property taxable value. That's, that's typically business personal property. So equipment inside of commercial businesses in your, in your city is roughly 15.2 million. And then centrally, centrally assessed value is much lower at just 6.6, 6.6. I guess I need glasses. I'm not quite 50, but I'm really close. But the total taxable value is 782 million dollars. So I hope that helps. You can see the tax rate continually goes down. The truth in taxation law that was put into place years ago kind of states that as values go up, rates should come down in a, in equivalent manner. And so entities like Nibley City have to justify their budget every year. So holding the rate, and I'm not a rate expert, that's the, our tax administration. But holding the rate is in fact, if the values are going up or an increase in, in taxes.
Yeah, we, we held it at the 1,600 for a while and then the council, and I think correctly, so said, holy smokes, these property values are going so, up so quickly. Maybe we'll back off the rate a little bit.
And to, to that, no, before we get into the other, I, I think, I don't know, I get myself in trouble speculating. We're seeing some stabilization um, in the market, generally speaking. But man, there's just a lot of pent-up demand, people wanting to come to Cache Valley. You, you see this continue. I mean, rates have slowed it down for sure, but it's, it's, there's just so much pent-up demand. I think that people are going to continue to come to Cache Valley. So I don't expect if there is a decrease, it's going to be significant. I, I expect that likelihood is that values will continue to increase, but who knows? We'll take that one year at a time.
So I just ran a number, counsel. I hope you don't mind, Brett, me just button in here.
Button in, please.
The residential history. So from 2000 to 2024, residential property value, total property value went up by a factor of 15 in Nibley. And then commercial went up by a factor of 13.
Yeah.
So, um, we have our work cut out for us to try to grow into this idea of a complete community that has not, that is more than a bedroom community.
Yeah. Com, commercial, I mean, the costs have gone up, but it's, it's more income-driven. You know, where houses are just demand-driven. I mean, it's just so, they have not gone up as fast. They've certainly gone up ve, very fast, but just not as fast.
So. Income, what, whose income?
Well, income to the property. I mean, they have to justify their existence by the income that they can produce.
Okay, okay, right. Everyone needs a place to live.
Right. Yep.
Good point. Thank you.
Your, your statement says the growth, is that what you said? The growth.
So the.
Gone up 15%.
A factor of 15. So a factor of 15 from the year 2000 to 2024. We have a factor of 15 increase in the total value of residential property. And a factor of 13, which is less, not a lot less, but it's less as a, of the total value of increase in commercial property.
I, I didn't look as, you know, what, what has Logan done compared to Nibley or what North Logan, that, those numbers may be slightly different. This is a bedroom community or generally has been, so you would expect that, but I don't, I don't know exactly, you know?
Well, become, it means we're more of a bedroom community.
Yeah. You're becoming more.
We were and we still are and maybe even relative to commercial property. Well, we have even more residential property value than we used to relative to commercial. Right?
And yeah, I mean, it's to think of, oh man, tho, those numbers are just hard to imagine. Cause I mean, certainly there would have been growth at their, or, or value growth had there not been any new houses built. The values would have gone up, but you combine those two things and it's, it's a huge number for sure. So I think some of you want to know about our process of establishing values and how we do that. How often we, um, how often we do that? We've changed our process, um, up until about two years ago, just when I came into office. We, and it wasn't, uh, it needed to happen. There, there's, we've changed software to a statewide system. And it's changed the way we have to do things. It's helping us to be more efficient for one. In our, in the old system, we would appraise according to the year built countywide. So every house that was built previous to 1950, we would do all of those houses. And then we do 1951 to 1970 in another year. And then 1971 to 1990, I can't remember the years, but the, we would do segments of year builds. And there's, there were certain advantages to that. You could get, when you did your, ran your comparables and that sort of thing, um, you, you were comparing all similar properties. So there's certain advantages to that. But with our new system, we're doing it based on geography, where, where we're at. And so the appraisers can go out and just do one town or a few towns in one year. We did Hiram in 2024 and all of the condos and townhomes. And we did a lot of land throughout the whole county. And, um, another thing that's changed in our process, previously we were doing one parcel at a time. Appraisers would literally pretty much do an appraisal on each property. There's certain advantages to that, but we're moving into a more statistical type modeling. So we're not quite there yet, but we're trying to get all this data. We have a massive amounts of data in our, in our database and we're, we're moving in that direction. So, but we're doing it by geography and, um, I believe Nibley is set to be on our 2027. Um, and, and what that, what that means, we may get to it in 2026. What that means is an appraiser will come out and take a picture and try to do a detailed review on that parcel and just make sure that the property characteristics are correct in our system. So they're double checking to make sure, you know, eight, I mean, the big drivers of value are acreage, how big is your lot? How big is your home? What year was it built? You know, those kind, how much is finished? How much is unfinished? You know, there's other smaller drivers of value. How many bathrooms? How many bedrooms? That sort of thing. We keep track of all that. But we're trying to just make sure that those characteristics are right. And once we get those right, then, then the, the statistical model, pretty much we can get better and better. So, um, it's taking time to do that, but we're, we're getting better at our jobs. I think our values this last year are closer than ever to market value. The advantage of that is equity. You know, it's, nobody's being left behind at, you know, a hundred or $200,000 too low. They're, they're maybe a little low, but hopefully they're close to market value. So everybody's paying their, their share according to value. That's how we've determined what is fair. Um, in, in nearly every state in our union, that's how they do it, according to value. So.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So you mentioned you have appraisers. How many appraisers do you have on your team that help you gather this data?
Yeah, there's 10 or 11 of us. There's also an assistant appraiser can help gather permits from your city. They'll gather the permit information that helps us know when a new house is going up and that, that'll trigger an appraiser going out and measuring it, putting on our records, that sort of thing. I have a personal property, person that's just taking care of business, personal property. And then there's, um, six people in the DMV. There's myself. So there's 20 of us in the assessor's office, but about 10 or 11 appraisers.
Okay. Um, so then I noticed on this last page, you attached a request for review. So is, so if your city is not up for that detailed assessment, then this is just requesting that your house specifically be detailed assessed.
Yeah, anybody can ask for that. That's a good point. Anybody can ask for a detailed review anytime. That typically happens during appeal season though.
Yeah.
This is, so I, I attached that detailed review. So that's the form that's used if you disagree, if any citizen disagrees with their current assessment. And you can, you, the, I've attached it for you guys, but if any citizen wants to, to appeal, they can go to cachecounty.gov. And you can, you, the, I've attached it for you guys, but if any citizen wants to, to appeal, they can go to cashcounty.gov. And on the assessors page, or actually right, there, it's not on the assessors pages, it's right on the main cashcounty.gov page. There's a, there's a link there for property tax appeals. And then right under that, there's a PDF, a link for PDF, and it says request for review. It's a little, I don't love the name, but it's request for review. And that's how they can appeal and what they, and we'll go through that in just a second, but they can, it's pretty simple. Actually, let's go there right now. I don't know how much time you want me to take, so. The request for review sheet is pretty simple, they just have to fill out some basic owner information, that's very simple. I mean, it says agent there, but that's for a lot of commercial properties, most people do not have an agent, but they just do it themselves. And, and then the property information, most people are filling this out as a residential. If they can put the parcel number, that's obviously very helpful. The market value on notice evaluation, so they need to put that number. If they don't put the four eighty-eight, put the number that's specific to your property. And then they need to put the, their own estimate of value. Maybe, maybe their assessment's five twenty-five and some change, and they need to put, they think it's four eighty-eight for whatever reason. They need to put that number down and then attach documentation that will help them. The more information that they have, the more successful they'll be in an appeal. Sometimes it's just a property characteristics that we don't understand, we make a lot of assumptions. Sometimes in the last cycle, a couple of years ago, we assumed when we were doing newer homes, we assumed basements were finished after five years. Now, not everybody gets a permit for finishing their basement, maybe, maybe in Nibley they do, but in the county they, they don't. So we sometimes assume that the basement is finished. And that frankly is a good assumption nine times out of ten, but it's, it's a bad assumption for that one person that did not finish their basement. So there's things that they can do to appeal that and let us know that our assumptions are not correct. So we are not correct, we're not perfect, we have to make assumptions to get to as close as we can to market value. And if people want to correct us on that, we are open to that. We will listen, so. No, they have to defend it, sometimes, sometimes we ask, can we come out and take a look, whatever, whatever, we just want to take a look. We don't want to look at every nook and cranny of your home, but we, we just want to verify that that's, that's finished or, or whatever. Sometimes there's an addition or, or, or whatever. Um, there, who, there's millions of different ways that they can contest this, so, and we'll list, we, we will listen.
How many pills do you get a year?
That's a good, good question. So between two and three hundred, the last few years, so when you divide that by the fifty-one thousand taxable parcels that are in our county, it's less than one half of one percent. So it's a small number appeal. Now, how many of those are successful? And it depends on to what extent. Some of them get it all the way reduced to what they want, sometimes there's something in the middle. It really depends on the information that they provide, so. Yeah, and then I, I will go back to about two thousand nine or ten, I think that there were twelve hundred appeals as the market crashed. If you remember the housing crunch, there was eleven or twelve hundred appeals, so it was a crazy time in our office. And we did lower them. We, we lowered those values, but I tell people, you know, the more information that you have that, that will be helpful, the better off you are. And it's out of our, it's out of the assessors jurisdiction. After May twenty-second, we turned the tax roll over, they appeal. And the, the hearing officers or council members, Catherine is one of the hearing officers. And they have to make the case to, to the, to the hearing officers and then they make the final decision. And if they don't like that decision, then they can appeal that to the state. But we're, we're hopeful that it's a fair process, obviously not everybody's happy. Most of the times out of the people that come in, I said two or two to three hundred appeal, we have hundreds of people visit our office or call during this time of the year. We, most people don't end up appealing, they, after they talk to one of our appraisers, they conclude that I don't know, it's not worth it, or they conclude that our value is correct is, is what our hope is. Or, you know, they, they say that was crazy to even come in, yeah, you're too low, I should have shut up, you know? So there's all sorts of reactions, but I don't know, that's, those are good questions.
So with this new kind of moving towards this statistical, you know, model, will that create less leaps in?
Yes.
And tax value?
Great, great point, that is the hope. We've seen a very dynamic market change over the last few years and we're trying to find some equalization, but yes, that is the hope. That by law, we have to review every, you know, send an appraiser out once every five years at a minimum. But the statistical analysis will help us to adjust, so even though an appraiser is not on the ground every year, that the value is changing by what's happening in the market every year. So yes, in, in the, in our old system, it would stay fairly stagnant and then all of a sudden you get a big bump in your assessment. And that was shocking to people and frustrating to people. So yes, that's a, that's a great question, it should stay closer to, to value. And even a detailed review is just checking on stuff, just verifying that the house is still there. Nothing's changed, maybe somebody put a new facade on or whatever that might change. But yeah, nothing's, nothing's changed, so it should stay roughly the same even with a detailed review unless our appraisers notice something significant there. Sometimes we'll pick up a, a detached garage or a shop or something on that. So yeah, there's, there still can be some increases, but yes, that's the hope.
Yeah, I, I think that's great.
Yeah.
I think it's those jumps that create.
Absolutely, it's very frustrating for taxpayers when they see that big bump and they say, my house did not go up fifty percent or eighty percent in one year. And we say, it absolutely did not, it did not do that in one year, it did it over five years, but it did go up that much. And that's just the last time we, we visited it.
We don't mind the ups and downs, it's the jerks we hate.
Yeah. And, and to your point, it should, as market, if it ever were to decrease, I, our models should be able to, to adjust to that, so.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah.
So Brett, once you have the characteristic of a property and house and everything else, you know, well described, is it always recent sales of comparable houses that establish market value? Or is there, and, and I write algorithms, I don't use this word in a bad way, is there an algorithm somewhere? Or is it, you know, I mean, what's truth, what's the standard, once you've identified what this is?
Yeah.
What standard do you hold that against?
Yeah. Yeah, ideally, I mean, even in our current system and what it has been is, yeah, it's sales drive, how it's applied. But in the future, yeah, we're just going to say, you know, houses, I mean, it's just a regression model type model, if you've had, you know, some of those classes, it sounds like you, you know more about that. But it's just, it'll be a regression model at some point. So those, whatever data is coming in saying, you know, demand is for this type of property, then it'll change those properties. But maybe other properties aren't seeing that and so they won't, they won't go up.
I mean, when an assessor right now comes, when, when my property is assessed, because it's my one of five years, does the assessor from the county find comparables that have sold in the last six months, like a private transaction those?
No, that's, it won't work that way, except in an appeal. When people appeal their property, then it goes back to good old fashioned appraising, using comparables. But the mass appraisal would just, how every house is done every year, no, it won't be done that way. It'll just be done by statistical models, but if, if they appeal, then a, a, an appraisal will be done. A, a market analysis type appraisal, just with comparables, finding superior comparables, inferior and bracketing them so that they're roughly in the ballpark.
The model is still driven by market transactions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And it's interesting, I got into this field as just, just an appraiser, so I have an appraiser mindset, so I'm having to learn this whole other, you know, statistical side of it. But it will be much fairer and equitable, I believe. But it's, it's contingent on us getting the inputs in the system correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, the statistical, that's how a lot of the other counties do it, I assume, and we're just trying.
The bigger counties than us have already been using it, the smaller ones have not, we're kind of right there in between, we're moving to that. They've been doing it for a few years, the bigger ones, so we're just kind of in there. I'm, I want to hire some stats people instead of appraisers, that's kind of where we're at. We have the data in our database to, to make this very fair, we're, we're just moving in that direction, so.
Is, is the state pushing that?
State's pushing it, yep.
Pushing it and helping you get there?
Uh, they say they're helping.
I'm from the government, I'm here to help.
Serious words, you can hear.
Here's your audit, this is me helping.
They, they, yeah, they, they are helpful, for sure. They, they're limited in their resources as well, we're, we're limited. Just for your information, I say ten or eleven appraisers, when I started originally in two thousand and five, there was ten. And I, I was there for two years and then I quit to go be a fee commercial appraiser for about six years. And then I ended up coming back in two thousand and twelve. So our staff is essentially the same as it was, I mean, very slightly bigger. So we have done more with, with less, basically. And that works to a degree just because of technology, but the reality is we're way bigger, so that's not going to work forever. We're going to have to get more, a few more staff just to help. I mean, we have two appraisers just going out, measuring and getting it on our records. It's a massive job just getting all of these new homes and commercial buildings on our records, it's a big, it's a big job, so.
So where do you get your budget from, you get like percentage of the appraisals?
There's an assessing and collecting line in addition to Nibley City and Cash County and the Cash County School District, there's an assessing and collecting.
That's where it's, okay.
Yep, and then it goes to the county, it basically goes to the county general budget, I believe. Now you're going to make me say something that may not be true, I believe that money gets funded. And then, and then the county kind of helps set the budget, yeah, make sure that, so there is a specific line to make sure that we have the correct resources to assess and to collect. There's been, and it, there's been many instances in the distant past, past of counties that wouldn't properly fund their assessing and collecting, so they'd get way behind. And so the state kind of forced this, that they didn't let that one get behind, basically. Yeah, those are good questions. I think that's about.
Sometimes on the county parcels viewer, they show delinquent property tax, that's driven through your agency also, or?
It's a treasurer, yep, yep, that's, that's the treasurer that collects.
Oh, I see, huh.
He goes after you if you're not paying your property tax, so.
Makes your parcel red.
Yep, it is public information, so you can see. It's been the case, it's not something anybody wants us to see, but well, a lot of people want to see, but they, it's just public information, people haven't paid their property tax.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's interesting.
I don't know, any other questions you have for me? I think that was, I could bore you to death for days, I get lots of questions every day, but.
The only one I had is on this page three on the real taxable value for twenty twenty-four. That number's different than what's on the first page. Or would that, would that be somewhere?
Yeah, I, so the, that's taxable value, so the houses might be worth the total value. This is, this is why I wasn't sure if I wanted to include this slide, because it is, this one's a state one. And so the taxable value, if you, or, or sorry, the market value is different than the taxable value. So we talked about market value and taxable, this is taxable value, the reality is the market value, I think, is more like one point.
Well, because it shows taxable on that first page is six twenty-six.
Well, that's one point one on the residential and then sixty-seven for the commercials, so you add those up and you're about one point two billion dollars is the market value of all the parcels. And then if you, yeah, so I think that that'll all should come out in the math to be fairly accurate.
Okay, hence combined, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're reconciling that by the third page, total taxable value from residential and commercial.
Yeah, I was, I didn't want to muddy the waters too much, but that's a good catch that, but that's kind of the, roughly the math of that.
Then how many, in, in, I think Justin had, how, how many cities honor the, the rate that you provide rather than generating their own rate? Yeah, certified tax rate compared to.
Just for a second, you know, his job is to come up with that certified taxable value, right? So the tax rate is all handled through a different office and that rate is calculated, it takes the value that he puts together and does some math to figure out what the rate is to bring in the same amount of revenue that you brought in last year from property taxes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's how the rate, certified tax rate is a, is a calculated rate based on his new value to bring in the same dollar you did last year.
Plus, plus new growth, there's a new, there's a new growth number, so the new houses are kind of extra money for that single year.
Yes, thank you. And so that, what makes my forecasting a little goofy, right? I always tend to leave that part till the end, but, but anyway, as I was flipping through, it's, it's an in, just in cash value, it was about a third of entities that raised taxes, if you will.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if they actually raised, raised, or if they just held their rate, I'm not familiar enough with their histories to know that. But as you, as I, as I flip through this, you know, taxrateutah.gov spreadsheet, you can see which ones are proposing other than the certified. It was about third, a little more than third, actually.
Okay.
I mean, it, it costs more to operate a city this year than it did in twenty twenty-three, I'm sure that's true. I mean, you know, just if we had no inflation, and I won't lay any blame, but we could talk about that. But things cost more money, so they, they do go, they do, it, it costs more to operate, to employ your people, to buy ass, all the things that you guys do. It's, it's a lot, it costs more money, but I think hopefully people are getting good value is the idea, I, I hope, you know, out of their services.
I think the word certified actually, Brett, tell me if I'm right, relates to the fact that you, the assessor, has certified this is the taxable value of property.
Yeah, it is based, it's based on that and then you're, it's just, it's just, it's just a math problem, it's just the total assessed value and then, and then what's your budget?
But then when we get to a certified tax rate, sometimes it says, well, that's the certified rate, it must be the right rate. It doesn't mean it's the right rate for Nibley City or Cash County or anything else, it says it's.
Right rate may be lower, it may be higher, who knows, yeah, that's up to you, what, what, what's going on. Yep.
Well, this has been very helpful, I.
Yeah, good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for asking, I, I've never done this to a city, so maybe, maybe the other cities will, and if I'll put something even better together next time, but.
We'll talk to our neighboring cities and you'll be the most popular kid.
I hope not. But if they do want to know, I'm happy to help.
Yeah, thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This thing will actually help because I experienced that huge jump and I did appeal.
Let's see, everyone, in the, in the instrumentation world, everyone believes the data except the person that collected it. Nobody believes the model except the person that wrote it. Okay, that, that was good, thank you for lining him up.
Yeah, thank you, I think it helps.
We get asked that question and know, and it just, there's a lot of information that I don't know. Okay, next we've got a possible discussion, well, we will have a discussion on resolution twenty-four sixteen, creation of a Nibley City Morgan Farm five oh one C three, three C, C three. I guess I'm, which one is it, C three, or I think it's C three, but I'm reading the agenda differently. C three, yeah, cool. C three, cool. Justin.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we had a couple of meetings on this. As you recall, we're working through the bylaws that we talked about. Last time we wanted to, it's really loud, sorry. We wanted to get a skeleton bylaw put together, but one that would be sufficient to maintain and make sure that we held on to the authority, I don't know, what do I, try, like the, the control, I guess, of the farm and trying to figure out where that balance is and what exactly we want. So we had a couple of meetings. We're not quite there yet. We have made a few tweaks. Council member Lowerson had some ideas and some tweaks and some things that he wanted to make as well. We have not been able to really kind of incorporate those and get the attorney's opinion on those yet. So we were asking you guys to continue this item and just keep it in mind that we are working diligently on trying to get these bylaws to a place where we can execute and create the five oh one three C and get the ball rolling, so.
Okay.
I'm going to continue resolution twenty four sixteen.
A motion to continue. Second from Aaron, thanks. Do you want to put a date on or just leave it open? It's up to you. When you're ready, leave it open.
Thank you.
Uh, before we vote, I have a, I have a question, Justin. I assume, but I'll ask, you would accept input from any council member?
Oh, for sure.
As every other thing we do around here, before it comes back on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Just to clear that up, right? Okay, then we'll vote on that. If there's no objection to voting, we'll vote on the motion to continue. Those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, three in favor, not opposed, that passes. Thanks. It's good. Okay, next, let's talk about the new Nibley City Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. Levi, are you going to introduce that again for us?
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if everyone's okay with it, and you know, everyone was here for first reading, I, I can just give you updates to, to the plan. So the, you know, I, I gave an overview of the process and the content of, of the master plan at the last meeting. And I mentioned that there were, there were some pending edits that we were working on for second reading. So just, and, and the agenda I reported, I gave a more detailed summary of, of those edits, but some, some, uh, uh, some additional detail was added to the executive summary. Just, and, and really we wanted to point out, you know, what the main purpose of the plan is so, and reflect, you know, what was in, what, what, what's being adopted. There was some added detail to the qualifiers for open space land acquisition. That, that's something we discussed in some detail during the first reading. But some of the things we added were, and you know, this is, this is specific when, when the city's looking at, you know, whether it's through development uh, or purchasing land, what, what are, what, what are some of the things we should consider? And, and some things we added to that, you know, there, there were already some considerations in there. But looking at opportunities for recreation, both, both passive and active usability of the space. So if there's constraints with, you know, whether it be that there's a stormwater pond that's going to take up the whole space or, or environmental constraints to the space, whether it's a citywide benefit or, or a, or just a benefit to the immediate neighborhood. And then, yeah, so those three things were, were added to that, to that section of the plan. There, there were just a number of corrections to tables and texts in, in here. And, and by the way, these, these changes were made based upon steering committee feedback. Aaron also provided some kind of textual errors that needed to be fixed, that those were incorporated as well. So the, the rest of them are really kind of more clarifications and making sure that things were consistent through the plan. There were just some inconsistencies in there and some grammatical and textual errors. But yeah, that, that's, those are the updates that were included in, in this plan. And as I mentioned it, in the first reading, the planning commission is, ha- has recommended approval of, of the plan. Has been reviewed by the steering, I, I mean, by the Parks and Rec Committee. They did have some comments that, that came out of the meeting and I was able to address those. You know, not necessarily to change the plan, but, but just, just some comments and questions and. But, yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it as far as updates from, from first reading.
Thanks, Levi.
Chad's also here and, and Chad was heavily involved in the processes. Develop, develop this. I mentioned that in the first reading. I mean, Chad wrote the, the recreation section of the plan. And, uh, you know, with input of the recreation department there, so.
Good job, Chad. If you want to offer comments, you can, or we can just see if there's questions, it's up to you.
I'll just mention a couple of things. First of all, in the executive summary and, and in other places, it does indicate that there's an emphasis on addressing the question of ongoing maintenance in our parks. I know Rod's very excited about that. That is something that's new and different compared to any other Parks and Rec master plan. So that's something that we might just point out that will be very valuable for us for our existing parks. It'll also offer us kind of a template as we look at other opportunities that might come in play as, as we develop new parks and as we look at other property that we might acquire. So I would say that, I know that the Parks and Recreation Committee and, and many of you are very excited about the element of adding some detail about what we do when they, we have an opportunity that arises when a developer presents some land. So we have some sort of a structure to evaluate. And I, I think that's going to be of tremendous value in, in this plan in particular. So definitely excited about that. Yeah, I think that really wraps up some of the initial comments. And like Levi said, happy to address any, any specific questions that you may have.
Counsel, it's yours.
A motion to approve resolution twenty four seventeen, up to the Nibley City Parks Rec and Open Space Master Plan.
Okay, a motion from Norm to approve the new plan. A second from Garrett. Thank you. Discussion. I, I think it's a great plan. I think it's well done. It's well executed. It's well planned. I can't, I can't help but note the work that we have cut out for ourselves, right? I mean, the appendix A financial analysis was direct to the point, you know, and I think that was really well done. The capital improvement projects in this plan ignoring an indoor rec space tip the scales at a hundred and two million dollars, right?
To, to clarify, that does include indoor rec. But what, what is, what, I guess what we did ignore on indoor rec is how are we going to get the revenue to pay for it? But my understanding is it does, it does include indoor rec in that, and, and, and the, and the, and the indoor rec is, is reflected in the regional park. So.
Because I see eighty five million dollars to invest in the regional park.
Yeah, but. The rec center.
Okay, that, thank you. Did I miss that in?
I, I, I think what you were referring to is that in the financial analysis, it, it, and it's when it speaks to maintaining our.
I'm just worried about capital right now.
Right, right. When it was speak, when it was speaking to maintenance, it did, they, there wasn't an analysis of maintaining rec center. Of just, ju- just a with adding additional green space, you know, to, uh, at, at the same rate as what we're currently provide.
Okay.
That, that's what the analysis included. A rec center is like a whole different ballgame there.
So that changes my statement a little bit and it's, it's more optimistic. So thank you. So let's say we're including an indoor rec space and we're trying to figure out how to do capital projects on a hundred and two million dollars, including indoor rec space. We could go borrow thirteen million, right, of new revenue. So in other words, we have new revenue of thirteen million, which is thirteen percent of a hundred. And raise property taxes on that average five hundred thousand dollar residential unit by four hundred and twenty dollars a month or thirty, four hundred and twenty dollars a year, thirty five dollars a month. And we're thirteen percent of the way to funding these capital projects. So we, we double that, borrow more money at twenty six million, then we're twenty six percent of the way there. And we increase property taxes by eight hundred and forty dollars a month, a year, or seventy dollars a month. So we've got some work cut out for us. And there's, and there's, there's other funding sources identified and working with other communities and so on and so forth. I'm not, I, I don't think we, I don't think the plan identifies the solution. I don't think it should. It, it lists possibilities, but I think that, that means we, we as the people that have to deal with the details of making things happen, have to deal with that detail to make it happen. Am I interpreting those numbers correctly?
Yeah, that, that sounds right.
So when the subdivision comes in, we're required, or we've been having them give us open space. Is that, and to see how expensive it is to develop it, is that still a pattern we like to do? Is it like to have open space or we have all this land that's sitting? I mean, we have a plan. Anyways, just a thought. Because a lot of times we're like, hey, we want, we want, want, and then now we got to maintain it and mow it and grass it or turn into HOA. So I think, I think this helps to have maybe a, when we request land, have a vision or find a way that maybe that we can give you more density if you build it out more. I don't know. It's good to have dreams.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
And you probably have constituents talking to you, just like the ones that talk to me and say, how come you're letting all this?
Yeah.
Density and it's not a rural atmosphere anymore and we're losing open space. And why can't, you know, why can't you protect that?
Yeah. And, and then we just seen from Catherine how much it costs to buy the developer rights on something and he still maintains it. There's not a, I know there's not a perfect answer, but it gets you thinking. You think how much is this going to cost? How much we have here? In, in having this land, though, we were able to increase our impact fees for parks, which it, it helps, but. Anyways, yeah, over the last six years, you learn a lot even on taxes and, and, and then the more you learn, the more you're like, I don't know the answers. Or how to get to there.
This is like a free puppy, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, everything costs. Yeah. But, no, I appreciate the effort. And I think with any plan, I think the city's been good is, is to be flexible with it. Because sometimes we get different grants that are available to develop some or, you know, like on the wraps of your firefly. So I, I hope we just keep it as a plan with, you know, driven by what's opportunities in front of us.
I identify with that comment, Norm. I think if, well, Nathan last time brought up the chance of, well, how do we make future council stick to this plan? I think that's what he said. And I think that's a great discussion that maybe we won't have tonight. You know, but the fact is, what's the right amount of planning and the right amount of agility when opportunities come up? I used to, I think I'm going to write about this in the next newsletter, Cheryl. So you got me thinking about it already. At Campbell Scientific, I was always the guy that didn't want a plan. I wanted to be agile. I said innovation and, and new technology and applying the same technology to new problems. That's, those are brainstorm kinds of moments and you don't plan those. I'm much more interested in planning and sticking to a plan when we're talking about spending other people's money. We're talking about some predictable patterns of population growth and the fact that we need new infrastructure. And, you know, new sources of revenue, new demands on revenue. I believe that in a municipal situation where we're not inventing new cities, we can't expect to stick to a plan better than someone who's working in R and D on products. On the other hand, opportunities come up and who's going to decide whether you push the button on that opportunity? Or who's, or stick to the plan? And you are, you all are. So. Because it all costs money and you get to approve the budget.
Yeah, lots of money. I, I definitely appreciate the effort, though, having the feedback and all the added stuff, so I think, I think it looks great.
Aaron, do you have something for us?
No. I think some, it looks like the changes were a lot of great changes that needed to be made, so.
Okay, thanks for working on. Aaron.
Yeah, I mean, it gives you, I'd call it a reality check.
It's a dream and a reality check all at the same time, which is probably what a plan should be. Hey, let's go to Disneyland. Yeah, that's great. How are we going to get there? We'll get in the car and we'll drive and we'll fly in there and say, okay, now how much is gas going to cost?
Yeah, I, I, I do like the evaluation model and some of the other things that we've put in here and I think it's good. I, I wish we can make developers put in more of these things for us.
So we have to maintain them? No, I'm kidding.
I don't know if we had to skip the upfront cost that maintain, maintenance is cheaper than, than the initial cost, the infrastructure. Everything costs money.
Okay, um, if the council's ready and if there's no objection, we'll proceed with voting on the motion to approve the new Parks and Rec Plan. Seeing no objection, Carol, uh, Cheryl, will you please call the roll?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Three in favor, none opposed. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Levi. Please show our appreciation to the Parks and Rec Committee and to the consultants that helped on this. Good job, Chad. Just one right after another, right? Appreciate you. Okay. Next, we have a resolution twenty four eighteen with an intent to adjust the municipal boundary between Logan City and Nibley City. Yeah, we're calling this and it's appropriate. Call this the first reading because we didn't actually do a reading when it was on an agenda before. So I agree with that. Levi?
All right, um, so first I'll just remind you what, what's being considered here. So, uh, th- this would be an agreement between Logan City and Nibley City to adjust our boundary and include the properties that you see up on the screen, um, which are currently in Logan City and adjust the boundary so that, so that they're in, uh, included in Nibley City's municipal boundary. This is driven by the property owner at Watermark and that was, uh, you know, the, the city already entered into an agreement with them that if and when they annex to Nibley City, there's, there's certain zoning rights that they, um, they would, you know, uh, receive. But, um, we're, rather than a disconnect and, and an annexation, we've met with Logan City officials and, and are pursuing this boundary adjustment, which is the preferred method for, um, for, for adjusting the boundary. So just, just to give you an update and, and, and also just to remind you that this isn't the final decision on this. This is, this is an intent to, to adjust the boundary. There's, there's then noticing and protest period. And this would, uh, this is likely to, um, if approved by, you know, both, both Nibley and Logan City, um, on the timeframe that we've kind of laid out, this, this would likely be considered for final approval in October. So you, you'll, you'll see it come back at some, sometime in, in that timeframe. Since the, I, we, we'd mentioned that, uh, there, there was uh, kind of a lack of communication with the other residential property owners. So this, this is including, we're proposing to include three additional. We're proposing to include three additional. Homes, you know, residential properties, uh, that are along highway eighty-nine ninety-one. The. The applicant mentioned that they attempted to contact them, uh, but, but we. We, we thought we would just be proactive and also send a, a letter out. Uh, we only had their contact information with. Uh, you know, their mailing address. So we, we did send a letter out and. Let them know that this was going on and this is really ahead of an official notice. I mean, they will get an official notice if, if and when this, this. Resolution passes, but, but that was sent out. Um, I did get one phone call from a. From a residential property owner and they had a number of questions on. The expected impact on their property taxes and fees and was able to answer their questions, um. Uh, which in general, there are some increases to, to what they pay by, by switching from Logan to, to Nibley City. Based on, you know, what I can tell on what the tax rates were. But they, they didn't necessarily say, oh, we don't want to do that. They just, they just had questions. I answered their questions and that was, that was as far as the conversation went.
Some of those. Taxing, property taxes in Logan are like a special district for the library.
Right.
I don't know if you included.
Yeah, they. I based it on, there's, there's a map, um, that has taxing districts and yeah, I know there, I mean. Nibley's mo- I think most of Nibley is all in one district, but Logan's split up into different ones. I mean, the. The school district's one reason for that, cause it doesn't follow their boundaries. I'm not sure if there's other, I'm not sure if there's other reasons, uh.
But the school district taxing wouldn't change.
Right. School district wouldn't change. And so why, I compared it to, um. What, I mean, what Nibley, the Nibley City boundary is, you know, basically right next door to them. And then, and then where they're at right now, what their tax rate is. I assume that if they annex, they would. They would be in that same district that's basically right to the south of them. And within Nibley City. So I, and I, I, I kind of, you know, put asterisks at the bottom of that, like. I, there might be some, something I'm missing here, but I, I tried to answer their question over the phone as. The best I could there, um. You know, doing a little research so that, so there's that, that's one update. And then another update at Logan City Council, they, they held a workshop. So similar, their, their format is, is. Typically they'll do a workshop and then, and then they'll. Hear the item. So they don't, you know, rather than first and second reading, they do workshop and, and then they consider it. Um, so, so they did hold a workshop on the sixteenth and. I, I spoke with Mike Desmoni, the, the, uh, community development director there and he's, he said that. They had a number of questions. There wasn't really indication that they, they weren't supportive of it, but just. Just had questions on, on kind of how we've come here and, and why we're doing this. That, that's kind of what, what he explained. I, I mean, I don't know if anyone. Was any, you know.
We could reconsider if you want. We sent it, actually we sent it back to the Parks and Rec Committee, start over. We tore it up and threw it, it's in the trash bucket, bucket if you want a copy of it. Thanks for your work on that. We really appreciate you, committee, you and the committee. Thanks. Yeah, good job. Thanks. Sorry, Levi.
Oh, it's all good. Um. So yeah, they, they held that workshop, um, that it's going to be back on their agenda on the sixth, uh, so next week. And, you know, basically this, the same consideration that's in front of you tonight, um, for, for Logan City. And, and then of course, if that passes, then, then we can move to the next step of noticing. So it is staff's recommendation to approve this resolution. And waive second reading. I'm not sure if that was apparent in the agenda item report or not, um. But.
So would, would we better wait till Logan approves it or does it matter?
I don't, I don't think it matters. Um, if they don't approve it, then. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would say, you know, base your decision on what you want for, for Nibley City.
Cause, cause we waited until they had it on theirs, either just to discuss it or to approve it. So it sounded like we just waited till they brought up on their.
To discuss it, yeah. And you could go either way.
You could, you could wait. I mean, if you wait, it'll, it'll push the. The time clock back. I, I, I guess, well, they'll have to wait a few more weeks, right? But that's. That's, that's up to you.
Well, I know one of the things we talked about in the last meeting is, you know, the misconception that Nibley was. You know, land hungry and we want to.
Right.
And we're not pushing this, which is why we did it. And I wanted to go to that meeting and I couldn't, and I tried to find their minutes aren't online anywhere for that meeting. So.
And I listened to the whole thing and I didn't hear it. I must've missed it too, but I, I sat and listened to the whole thing. I think, well, they must not be on their agenda.
Cause I wanted to see how they.
I just, I just heard secondhand from, from Mike. I, I didn't, I didn't hear the meeting. I didn't look at the minutes, so.
Minutes weren't there, but I was trying to figure out which way they were leaning from the discussion. So we knew which way we wanted to go.
Yeah. So if we wait, if we do first reading adoption, wait to see what Logan does on the sixth. Our next council meeting is on the twenty-second. Two weeks to the schedule, which then means that we start the process of notification and wait months.
Sixty days, right?
Yeah, sixty days for people to say, that's a bad idea or a good idea.
Depending on the timing of the meeting, it, it might add two weeks. It might add four weeks depending on. When meetings are. Scheduled, you know, I'd have to, we'd have to look at that for some, somewhere in there. Just because we don't have a meeting every, every week.
I do like your idea of the first reading, cause I still feel like I want Logan to make a decision first.
That's valid. So you wanna make a motion for first or you want me to make a motion to. It's your birthday.
Tomorrow. Let's not age me prematurely.
Give us a motion here.
I have until twelve forty-six tonight.
Twelve forty-six tonight is tomorrow.
I know. I'm glad you're paying attention. All right, well, I will make a motion. Uh, to approve resolution twenty-four dash eighteen, first reading. For the adjustment of the municipal pound boundary between the city of Logan and Nibley City.
A motion to approve the resolution for first reading. Is there a second? Second from Aaron. Thank you. Let's talk about it.
So you just want first reading to give Logan time to decide?
Yep. Before we finalize it, I want them, I want them to weigh in. Cause. I mean, this is, I don't know, this is all about property rights and, and, you know, that's what the landowner wants, then. You know, you gotta go through the process, but. I, I don't want to be the. You know.
Yeah, we're not building an empire here, right? And, and Logan is giving. Property from their jurisdiction and we're receiving property from their jurisdiction. I think it sets a good precedent to say. We'll wait until it's offered.
If you're okay with that.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Other comments, discussions, questions, then with that, we'll proceed on the motion to approve for first reading. Resolution twenty-four eighteen. Those in favor of advancing this to the second reading. Anticipated on our next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three zero. Perfect. Thanks, Levi. Well, that's pretty cool. Um. We're at the end of our agenda. Tom, we kinda. Didn't give you much time tonight to enlighten us with your wisdom and knowledge and humor. But we'll give you a chance, we'll give you a chance now. You let you go first on staff reports. How's that?
Get to the right page here. I like the new microphone. Very nice. Um, I don't know if people have been following the twelve hundred West project, that they've been laying asphalt starting at five AM on Monday. And they, they've continued all through this week. They should be wrapping that up either late tomorrow. Or early Saturday, mid morning.
Wait, now I have to ask you, the early start was only on Monday.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, everything else has started at seven o'clock after that. So what the, the intent on that early start on Monday was to keep. Stone Bridge, the subdivision hole, wanted to minimize the impacts and they had flaggers and they wanted to just get that done so they, people can. Travel in and out of there seemed though, there's only one entrance into that subdivision. So I thank you for granting that waiver to the noise ordinance. I appreciate it. Really help with the project. Um, moving forward though, um, expect the, the road to remain closed. There's still the Jersey barriers to be installed. There's some. Finalizing on some landscape improvements and things. And there's a lot of electrical still within that roundabout. So. Even if we did open the road, we'd have to detour them at either, you know, twenty-seven or twenty-eight hundred south or. Something to that effect. They still wouldn't have free travel through there, but just because there's not enough room to accommodate construction. I'd expect the closure to remain in place for another three weeks and, uh. Then I get to race the car down, check for smoothness of the asphalt, surely for that safety reason there.
Check the design speed?
I, I, I check it, it's a high rate of speed, the smoothness of the asphalt of the road. That's one of the benefits of being a project manager on road projects.
Is that before or after the speed signs go up?
That's before there's any police. Um, I had an update for Nathan on the thirteen hundred West project. We're progressing very well on the design of. Widening the road there by Nibley Farms and such, um. There, there's still, we're, we're playing around with the design to try to refine it to limit the impact to the existing wetlands there. To less than a tenth of an acre. First crack, we ended up slightly over a tenth of an, of an acre impact. And what that means is if we stayed that course. We would have to mitigate the impacted wetlands and create new ones somewhere else at a, a higher proportion. So if we. It, it would be usually two to three to one of the proportion of how much you're, you're removing to how much you have to create. So. We're still refining that. Hopefully we'll have something in place, uh, over the next week or two. Um, then we, once we get there, we can start the permitting application for the less than a tenth of an acre impact. Hopefully we'll cross our fingers. And, uh, be able to bid that this fall for construction next spring. But it, it is in the budget about three hundred thousand dollars to do that, so. Um, I had something for Kay as well. At the last council meeting, she. Requested me look into the, the thirty-two hundred south signal at the highway. I've been in communication with UDOT, um, they're, they're really accommodating to us, um. About a few weeks ago, they put a new matrix, that, that's a type of detector unit. And, and, uh, they're still refining it a little bit. I think we're pretty close. The bad part is, um. It did alert them that there's, it's might be too, um, reactive to incoming traffic from thirty-two hundred south. And it's not giving enough green time on the highway. So we might see a little more delay, but it will pick you up and you will get the call. And she just wanted us to keep an eye on it open the next couple of weeks. And then, um, this morning I sent out notifications to. Um, folks that live on thirty-two hundred south between eight hundred west and nine fifty west on the south side of thirty-two hundred south. Uh, last council meeting, the council approved us entering into a contract with three XL construction for the construction of the sidewalks there. They would like to start as soon as next week. So I, I provided the notice. We're still working through some contract issues, but, um. If we can get it started next week, I anticipate we'd get done with that project middle of September. So just a little bit later than I hoped. I wanted to get it done before school was in place, but, um. Or school started, excuse me. It just didn't quite work out there. Are there any questions for me?
Originally in Park Park, were they gonna start this year or?
The intended is to start this year.
Okay.
Who, there was, we were thinking about starting and kind of trying to avoid certain areas, um. DWA felt it was a little bit inefficient doing that. So we're still waiting for the U Ladies dresses. And I'm hearing they're starting to bloom in the, around in the valley. So, um, once we get. That identified, we can kind of refine the plan and.
See the amend and. Search, they have citizens go out and look as well, right? That got canceled for Saturday.
Are they looking for the U Ladies dresses?
I think so. That's what Becky told me. She said it's, you saw it on Facebook. Yeah. So I don't. Cause they're not blooming yet. So, but they're, they're getting close.
They're starting to show up in, in places. So that we're. Our consultant is pretty confident that in the next few weeks, we'll be seeing them, so.
Can you tell me who that consultant is? Just curious.
Um, I've been working with, um, Bob Thomas with Bio West.
Okay.
He was a consultant with, uh, Blue Line Design that did the, the design for the park. Anything else?
Great questions.
No, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Uh, yeah, I went out of order. Should I continue? You guys mad at me for letting staff go first? No, I don't see anyone scowling at me. So. Let's go to Cheryl, please. Thank you. Justin?
Wanted to let you all know about maybe some of your kind of appeal to a citation that was issued in our nuisance ordinance. Uh, we learned a lot through that. Uh, we learned that, uh, we missed, uh, basically a state code that, uh. Didn't get implemented into our code that requires. The option or the ability for, uh, a person to correct. Which ninety-nine out of a hundred times we usually do anyway. So it's not like it's a big deal at all. It needs to be added to our code. So we may bring back some language to change the code. Um, in this case, we talked about parking not being one of those things. And that, that, uh. The opportunity to correct the issue only applies on personal property companies right away. So we can still issue. Parking citations to people who really would park within right of a personal property. So, you know, we just kinda got, I got, this issue would happen to be that, uh, parking on the front lawn. We went straight to a citation instead of giving them a warning. So we lost that appeal, uh, based on that, uh, not anything really to do with the merits of whether or not. The nuisance was even a violation of like the officer, we need to get into that part of it. So we learned a lot. Uh, I think it was a good, uh, opportunity, at least for us to learn, uh, you know, it cost us a little bit of money. Um, there were some things that, uh. That I learned through there and you guys, I don't know if you corrected or wrong, but, um. I felt like my job was not to, I mean, the, the applicant or the applicant.
The appellate?
You know, they came in and they, you know, they read me that code. They wanted me to make that decision, you know, just to like kite block all that and like all this.
Before it went to the appeal, right?
But, but we, you know, I feel it's important to, to stick to our guns and, you know, follow the process. You know, in this case, the process worked, like we identified a, a situation, an issue, but it should be, you know, it should go through that process. And, and we all, I feel like especially, you know, when it comes to nuisances, uh, violations, code violations, you know, like that, so. Tendency for, you know, they're gonna reach out to you guys and they're gonna. Want you guys to make this go away, solve this problem. You guys are at the seat of counsel and you do it wrong, but, you know, my, my advice and my two cents. You really should let the process run out. Your job is to make the law. You guys set the law, you guys set the law, and then it's up to staff to interpret that law and to enforce that law. And, and there's, there's. The avenues around, you know, uh, processes in place where, you know, those checks and balances, you know, those things all wash out. But if, if, if you guys go diving into every. Wants you to dive into all that process, it just muddies the process. I mean, your job is to make the rule. And so as, as you watch this process, you feel like that rule needs to be changed, that's great. You know, you can. Help us with that and help us come back and change the rule. But that's the avenue, that's the. You know, that, that's your job. That's what, that's what you gotta care for. And, and, you know, we completely agree with that. We honor that. We want a part of that. So I don't think that made sense, but I just thought it was a good learning experience. Um, you know, hopefully this, this citizen had, you know, it's kind of. Unfortunate for him, it was a little bit of effort on his part, a little bit of, uh, maybe angst or anxiety, cause he had to put out a little bit of money to actually have the appeal. Funded the money because it was successful, the appeal. But I, I think, oh, I think, I think it was a good example of how the process works. I hope you have your thoughts on that or care to chime in.
I, I think you made your point. Well, you made it so well, it makes me feel guilty about. Redefining daytime hours for temporary short-term exceptions to the noise ordinance. Which Nibley City is allowed to do. Nibley City is allowed to waive temporarily. Which nibbly city is allowed to do. Nibbly city is allowed to waive temporarily the uh noise ordinance. But it doesn't say which part of nibbly city. So, so I did it.
You okay?
So Justin is the car off the lawn?
You know, we still have that. This this gentleman, I guess. You know, he feels like, you know, it's a big chunk of area that he puts some gravel down. Some grass grew through and, you know, from the street looking back, looking at it, it looks like law. But you're standing on the top of it, looking down. Right away, based on the definition. So I feel like we can work that all out. You know, the few people that I look at, look at everybody's reading that as a violation.
Right. The appeal officer didn't say it wasn't a violation. He said, we didn't give him a chance to correct the problem.
Yeah, I pressed him on that. I said, well, you're going to tell us if that, if you think it's a violation.
Oh, that's another appeal.
He said, no, we're not supposed to do that. That's an advise. We're not supposed to issue advisory opinions on things that are irrelevant to the findings. So.
I thought it was a good learning experience. A little bit of angst and anxiety, but.
Sergio survived it. Okay.
I think so.
All right.
Yeah, we've had a couple meetings since then to kind of make sure he was okay. You know, things, he understood. He seems to be fine.
Yeah, I he's he said it's a good learning experience. Um, but he would appreciate the the backup of, you know, his superiors of the city council when he, when he goes out there and, you know, does the best he can.
Yep.
I mean, he he's been by ordinance appointed to make interpretations of of our code.
Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on. Next issue, there was a little bit of angst today about thirty two hundred south uh traffic control and uh I I started sulking most of the day, so I think you can get all the details, but there were some upset people about notifications, closures, detours. I mean, to be honest, I mean, that's part of the reason we've kind of gone away from this company. This these companies here are doing this under quarantine uh because what they put down for us two years ago didn't uh seal and sticker properly. So all this work for them, you know, no cost to us, but you know, part of the issue we had with them before was just add a hole in the china closet, just get it done and put up with the complaint instead of thinking ahead, finding ahead, trying to. Again, you might have heard some of that. Uh, I haven't got to the bottom of it yet, the details of it. I'm unsure at this time. So you may have heard some of that. Uh, wanted you guys to know, welcome. Um, wanted you to know we're working hard on the salary study that was funded. Uh, we had a great uh meeting with consultants uh last week. Uh, I got a lot of them booked. So I think I'll lock my door tomorrow or just not show up in my office. We are working uh quite heavily on it. I wanted to give you an update. Um, I've got a little bit of discussion about nibbly city seeking its own zip code. Uh, so we kind of touching that, feeling that, trying to figure out exactly what needs to happen there. There's kind of been some, yeah, it doesn't make a difference. Ah, it doesn't make a difference. And it came down to, you know, me and Mayor speaking with uh Nick Kinska on the planning commission is really into understanding how the whole sales tax system works, making sure that we're getting the money that we should be getting. And we've had conversations before and everybody said, oh, yeah, you're getting it, you're getting it. And when I really pressed him, he's like, eh, you probably are getting every dime, but you know, there is some human interaction in there that's with drawing tables and maps and some things. And it's like, you know, your own zip code would help make that easier. And so I feel like it's worth at least kind of pushing a little farther, a little harder to see if it happens. It makes no, uh, according to Logan Postmaster, it makes zero difference to them. Um, zip codes. Doesn't make it the same for them. They don't care. So but what it does take is getting the right people, the post office to make it happen. And that may involve pushing our uh center. So we may bring back a resolution for you guys, which is request them to help us make take action, do something about that. But just wanted you to know we're working on that and uh.
Can I ask a follow up question about the postmaster? Did you have any conversation with him about um, what is it? Eleven hundred west, twelve hundred west? How the road is like twelve hundred west here and then it's also twelve hundred west here?
Twelve hundred wests?
Yeah, and like fixing that?
Well, we had a discussion about that with the resident, but.
We.
Someone brought that up three weeks ago.
Really in our court. We can, we 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 decide the addresses and the streets.
Yeah. Okay.
Within our city, the 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 post office just follows what we assign. So we'll, I mean, I've got some thoughts, but.
Sure.
I that I give the post postmaster and Logan kudos for being easier to work with than the last time we talked about this twenty-five, twenty, twenty years ago. They just didn't want to mess with it.
The zip code issue?
Yeah. The way I remember it. So I don't know.
Uh, wanted to make you aware that for the budget, we picked up another person to help us in this water sewer department. Uh, his name is James Cleverly. Uh, he uh scouts some years of experience. We're really excited about him. He's going to hit the ground running and be a very valuable member of the team. Uh, his most recent uh responsibilities were at Logan City, being their camera van operator. So he did, he's done a lot of sewer inspection, watched a lot of dirty videos, but we don't hold it against him. Sorry, sewer joke. Um,
wanted you to make sure you guys are aware of the August nineteenth. We've got a uh city summer party. Uh, we'll be sending out RSVP for that pretty soon. Uh, putting together some plans should be a a really fun activity for the whole family that night. Uh, bike to work week is September ninth to the thirteenth. Um, we have our audit, our annual audit coming up next month. And uh, maybe late August, if I remember right. And so part, if you recall, part of our audit every year is we do perform an internal audit where someone internally comes and just checks on uh things. I believe Norman helped us with that last year. I think Kay did the year before. And really, it's just kind of a checklist. Sit down with Amy. Amy kind of shows you what the state, you know, kind of recommends uh for this internal audit. And then it's really up to whoever wants to do it to just kind of pick and choose. You know, this, this, man, don't worry about that this year. Do this. So it's kind of up to you on the level of time commitment and and what you want to do with it. Um, but we are, you know, looking for a volunteer to help us with that again this year. Um, and again, we got some time there. Uh, there's no super big time crunch, month and a half or so before we'd really need to nail it down, nail it down. But I think uh, I think Kay did it. Kay really, yeah, she she dove in. And I think she spent a solid three days here, if I remember right. So it's so it's kind of up to you guys on how you want to do it. But we appreciate it because it just gives, you know, number one, I feel like, you know, there's a whole audit part of it where, you know, someone's checking over our shoulder and and making sure we're doing things properly, which is is very important. But also, it really gives you the opportunity to 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 really understand and and get down to the nitty gritty of the processes and the amount of care and the amount of uh effort and professionalism that goes into how we manage the public's money and what we're doing with it to make sure all those things are taken care of. So you really can get a firsthand view of that. So I don't know, uh, if somebody just want to volunteer now or send me an email or I don't know how you'd like to do that. But we are looking for a volunteer to do that.
Nathan, Garrett, is one of you really wanting to do that?
I did it. It was an hour and a half. So you don't.
You're a slacker.
When I hear three hours, three days.
Can it be less than an hour?
Efficiency. So you can use it as time you got.
If you recall, it is also one thing. It helps us on a, we bring to you a goodness, what's that called? Fraud risk assessment.
Yeah.
Every year. And we get points on that for having somebody do it.
My kids are going back to school next week, so I'll have more time on my hands. So I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Is that okay with you?
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, I will have uh Amy reach out to you.
Okay.
Again, we're not in a big time crunch, but just wanted to be thinking about it. Um, this one was a little concerning. Uh, you may or may not have heard. We did have a little bit of an issue with the the uh water system with a taste and odor problem. Uh, what we found out is there was some uh construction going on over a ridge line and line got charged and um uh, what's the, what am I looking? There's a word I'm looking for. Uh, it basically put into service and then there was some work that needed to happen to it. So they shut the line down, did the work, but the line never really got turned back on and put into service. So there was a stagnant amount of water that just sat in there. And so when it was discovered, there were, we should have done a better job of making sure that water got flushed out. But we think some of it got actually kind of moved around in the system. So crews have been out extensively all afternoon, uh, you know, flushing and testing and double checking and making sure. And there has been zero indication of any problem uh other than taste and odor at this point in time. So if you hear something, uh, you know, we certainly they're welcome to call us and ask any questions they have, but we we feel confident that uh that there's chlorine residual and everything is fine. So um, wanted you to be aware of, you were invited to August eighth, which is in a week from today. CVTD is doing a rebranding. Uh, they got a little uh get together at eleven. If you uh want to go to that at their uh transfer station at uh hundred fifty east, fifth north there by the Smith's marketplace. Um, and the last thing wanted you to be aware of was, and Cheryl can correct me on the details of this, but we we had a clerical error on the resolution that we passed regarding the salaries of the staff and of the council. If you recall, we required a new law that we added a whole bunch of staff to that. We got everything correct to your guys' salary. So we apologize. Um, we thought we should just bring that back and redo it. Um, but then we were thought, well, maybe we're gonna, we're gonna have to redo it anyway with that salary study. Uh, and so we're, that's, you know, maybe gave us more motivation to try to get that done. And so it's okay with you guys. We're probably just gonna not bring that back until we make all those other adjustments as well.
Are you meaning we'll reopen the budget at that time and?
Potentially, but we need to, we need to, we need to have a public hearing and post an accurate resolution on salary increases. That's really like the checkbox we need to check off. And so when it, when we make those adjustments to the salaries, we need to do that again. And then if we, if like, like we put a fair amount of cushion in the budget, but if we need to reopen the budget, we'll do that as well. It's kind of two separate issues.
So specifically, and I I didn't find this. I'm not sure who did find it. Cheryl, thank you. Uh, you all did not receive your four percent cost of living increase in the new fiscal year.
We passed it.
We we passed it, but we we passed, we said it was going to be a four percent increase, but we didn't actually put the numbers down that were a four percent increase. I think we went back one year and increased from the year before instead of what the current rates were. So
Okay.
So.
Were the other ones on there, correct? Okay.
Yeah, it's just the council, right?
Do you want maybe like a deadline? Like if you don't get the salary thing done, that we bring that back? Would that make sense? Or like if we don't have it by November or something?
I hope to maybe have it back next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we're really trying to hammer this thing out. So I would say, worst case, if we don't have this thing done, we'll bring it back in six weeks.
That's fair. Thanks, good.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you. I see you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Justin. Levi?
Uh, just real quick, we uh, just a couple of things that are kind of in the pipeline that I I'd mentioned the uh Stokes Nature Center as development agreement. Where uh that that they need to be considered. Um, it's going to be on the agenda for planning commission next week. And um, and then you'll hear it at the next, the meeting after that, if if they, if the planning commissioner makes a recommendation on that. And then Wesley Nelson Farms also has a consideration for a rezone and some code changes. It's also going to be considered uh by the planning commission next week. Um, so those notices have been sent out and um planning commission will will hear those. I think that's everything I've got for now.
Thanks, Levi. Uh, we'll go down to you, Nathan.
Um, everyone covered mine, so I was listening via YouTube. So that was nice. Thank you. Um, I did miss the part about the asphalt thing that happened again today. Um, I haven't seen it yet, but it sounds like someone drove down the one that was done today, like right down the middle. Um, so I haven't seen how bad it is, but something to maybe check. I don't know. Okay. Um, but everything else got covered. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for listening in. Could you, let's do a, can you hear me now, Chuck? Could you hear us?
Uh, and Justin was tough till I got the mic in front of him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all about.
Good work, Levi.
Aaron?
Um, I don't have much. I just wanted to say, last week we brought up a couple of things to Steve and he helped coordinate those with Rod and you did as well. Uh, drinking fountains up and Firefly? That's awesome. And uh, Steve also reached out to Rod and had him trim those bushes on the corner near my house, but eighth west and twenty-four fifty south. And I think it actually really improved the visibility on that corner. So, so thanks to those guys for doing that.
Did we look at all the medians or just that one?
I think we were looking just at that corner specifically. It's not in the median. It's on the corner by the, by the park sign.
Okay.
But they basically cut the bush in half. It was five feet tall and it really helped. So you can see left much easier. So that's all I had.
I'd I'd like us to make sure nothing growing in the median is blocking view.
Yeah, I'll 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 check.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Garrett, birthday boy.
It's tomorrow. Yeah, let's not start that. Trying to forget this one. No, I appreciate it. Rod reached out to me too that uh, I'm out that. So you, you know, your staff is so responsive. I mean, we really live in the best city. So and uh, just grateful for that. I did have a a resident that emailed that that reached out to me. I told him I'd have to get back to him because I didn't know the full details of it. And I know some of it from when I was on planning commission, but the fire that we had over here by EK uh recently. And so the resident lives over here by that. He said the response time for Hyrum was like fifteen plus minutes to get to that fire. And they have a friend or relative or somebody that works in the Logan Fire Department. They were saying, well, if you were with Logan, it would be so much faster. You should tell your city. And I'm like, and I told them, I'm like, Logan created the problem because they told everybody we're not servicing you anymore. And they wanted to like triple the fees. So we are doing what we have to do so that we have fire protection. But I would like some clarification so that I don't lie to a citizen about exactly. I know why we're at Hyrum to some extent because I know Logan sent the notice. We're not servicing the county anymore. I remember that from planning commission, but if there's any more details anyone can give me, because I, they would like a call back with, you know, why didn't we, why aren't we with Logan? Why, you know, and I'm, I want to be able to give them details that actually were factual and true.
Okay. We going to do that now or right after or tomorrow? What? I can do it now if you want.
That's right now is fine. I'll take notes.
Uh, and some of this.
Because I remember some.
Now that I'm saying this. Um, so we have always been with Hyrum, always uh for a really long time. And what happened is in the past, there was a pretty good mutual aid agreement where uh, they called everybody to come help, but Logan kind of said, we're going to scale back on our mutual aid, really is kind of what started the ball rolling and kind of caused this.
I remember that part.
Mix up. And so at that time is when Cache County stepped up a little bit and they started uh amping up their fire uh protection. They built the the facility here in Hyrum. That thing is uh staffed with uh both fire and EMTs now. Um, and so.
Are are they all volunteer or is there full time?
I believe.
Do we know?
There's somebody, and I shouldn't say, I I don't know for sure. I guess.
I think they have onsite personnel there.
I think so too, but I need to double check. And so I had, um, I actually spoke with EK about the fire. When I first heard about the fire, I thought it was further south. And when I actually learned about it this week and went over there and was speaking to EK. And when I actually learned about it this week and went over there and was speaking to EK, um, and asked them. And there, we, that we saw somebody in the house, actually in the backyard, I was trying to get to them, but I wasn't able to reach them to ask them that question, um, how the fire department did. Uh, EK, they weren't there, so, you know, and nothing, no damage happened, so they were perfectly happy with the fire department. But I also had Steve reach out to the fire department and just say, hey, how did, how did it go, is our water system functioning properly? Did you have any issues? Um, and. The only issue, they, they were perfectly happy with the water, the amount of pressure, the flow and all that kind of stuff, the only issue they mentioned was that. Uh, and the last few fires seemed to be like people have been parking too close to hydrants. So we have pushed out a little bit of a Facebook campaign, requesting people, you know, park further from the fire hydrants. We've talked to Sergio about issuing warnings if he sees and, and or citations if needed, uh, because, uh, the firemen. Said something to the fact that they can't enforce anything unless the curb is painted red, which, uh, we just, we just disagree with, we think we can do that without painting the curb. Uh, the state law says you need to be fifteen feet from a fire hydrant, doesn't say it has to be marked red or anything, so. Um, so Sergio will be working on that, uh, as, you know, on, on top of his mind, and, uh, we relayed that to Hyrum and to the fire department. So I don't know if that helps, or that answers your question.
No, that, that definitely helps, I think they were just concerned because they live right there, and they felt like it could have spread a lot faster. And, and they were wishing the response time might have been a little quicker, and whoever their friend or relative is, and Logan was telling them that Logan would be faster. And I'm like, I don't really think so.
Well, I'm amazed that every time there's a fire in Nibley, either. The person next door works for the Logan Fire Department, or is married to someone who works for the. Because I've heard exactly the same story from a fire three years ago.
Oh, good, good to know.
Why?
My neighbor's a Logan City animal and controlling force.
I wonder if we should, uh, Chief Hammer would have the details on response time.
Yeah, I can look into those, maybe gather some more data.
I mean, they have a number, and Chief Hammer, I could verify that number.
I'd like to know.
And Chief Hammer is very concerned about, I mean, he, he's very concerned about response times and. And every, you know, he, he talks to mayors and groups of mayors about response times, and he talked to us about this fire district and, you know, a new firehouse. And, I mean, all he wants is money, right? Because he wants reasonable response times, he's got some incredible maps about what the expected response time is and what it's gonna grow to be. As communities grow, and so he, he definitely has the data on this exact one, and it would be. Maybe worth reviewing that with him, I'm not saying I'm dumping on you, I could talk to him if you want.
I, I'm happy to look into it as well, and we got a. In at the dispatch that could look it up maybe too, which did we ever, did we, uh, introduce Sage at all?
Okay, well, thank you, that's all I have.
We had our, uh, bi-monthly meeting about Al's project, appreciate staff and, uh, Aaron and, and Claire that came. And if you guys want to know what we talked about, or everyone participate, just let us know, but. Um, I know a lot of times I don't agree with everything, but he appreciates that we're talking about him and, and giving him the ear, so, so thank you. But that's.
What was it discussed in the meeting?
Uh, well, it's come between planning and zoning, but we just, we have an outline, the meeting, we just review what it has and just. Find out how we can support staff and, and, uh, the outline of things he needs to do next, he's got a lot of other stuff going on his side that's. Like all apart, or going together, or thought it closed or don't, but anyways, I think he, he appreciates the, that we're thinking about it. We'll see how that comes tomorrow, but.
Storm, uh, I'll be very brief, um. Maybe you've noticed in a status report, uh, Bragg has a new director, and so yesterday was the first. Bragg executive or Bragg Board of Directors with the new director, and I'm. I'm really encouraged by what the new director has outlined and planned, and incredible. I think moves to better efficiency, he comes from Bragg, within Bragg, on the human services side, so he's definitely. Uh, focused on fighting poverty and helping people that are in need of help. And, uh, I, I, I see. Uh, after, after many, many, like fifty-one years of service from the previous director, good faithful service. I think, I think it's gonna be a good, a good transition to some new, some, some new enthusiasm. And with that, um, I'm not sure if you all. Think about these community development block grants, CBGBs, it's a housing, H, HUD, Housing and Urban Development Program. At federal level, it pushes money to the state, which the state pushes money to individual associations of governments. That money is handed out on a competitive bid, turns out Bragg. Gave half of that money back last year because of errors in processing with public notice and public hearings and so on and so forth. So we need to, we need to fix that right off, but in addition, I want to. Put on your backburners the idea that we don't, Bragg doesn't actually have to go through this. We're gonna go through competitive awards from people that apply from different municipalities or nonprofits. But Bragg could actually choose a project that they say this is important for our association of governments to do. You know, maybe it's, uh. Uh, I don't, I don't know, it's like a warming center, or maybe it's, uh, food security. Or maybe it's whatever, 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 but the Board of Directors could actually forego the whole. Uh, competitive bid process, which frankly, some of those, some of those, some of those applications aren't that strong, in my opinion. And the Board of Directors could just say, look, we're gonna spend our, all of our money on this. Uh, so if you, I, I want you to maybe think about, you know what, what this community, whether it's. Cache County or the three counties or whatever, what we really need to help people, uh, to fight poverty and, you know. Get, get things squared away so they can move on with their lives, is this, then let me know. And we could put in a application from the Board of Directors level. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, please.
I've passed the, I'm not gonna be able to remember the official name of it, but Highway one sixty-five and twenty-six hundred south, the trailer park there.
Yes.
Where there's the new little home being built, has that been started? Because I, when, every time I look down the street, it, I see a big box of what looks like the house sitting there, but it doesn't look like it's been, that project's been begun.
I defer to.
Have a dead hole.
All the building permit, they're, they're just prepping the site now.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and they have, if you remember, one of the conditions was that they had to give, um, us a plan for improving water.
Water, yeah, yeah.
And they have done that, they actually made some improvements, he, he sent me some pictures of the pipe that was exploded, and they fixed that pipe.
Good.
I don't know, we'll, we'll see if that fixes the issue or not, but, um, they, they made, they did a lot of other improvements as well, besides that. Uh, but they, they also gave us a plan, and anyway, so I, I think they're close, I think he was shooting for having it open. July thirty-first, I, I think they missed that goal, but I think they're really close. Once, once the site's all prepped, he told me it's like a day to put the thing up, is it just?
Pop-up can.
Yeah.
You know, you gotta get the foundation and all the utilities in, and that's, that's what they're working on now.
Okay.
They'll get the landscaping in probably after it's up.
Nice.
Did you have more on that, Tom?
No, I was just gonna say, I know, uh, we've inspected the sewer and the water, so they are well underway, and that, that's been several weeks now.
Great.
So.
Very good.
Right, we talked about a CBBG grant for their water system, I think they're actually gonna get it squared away without applying for a grant. But that's, that, that's an option that's still available.
They might get, they, they're looking at other grant sources as well, other than CBBG to. Yeah, to pursue, but.
Okay.
We'll see.
Alright, that's it for me. Think we're done, we, if there's no objection, we will be adjourned. We're adjourned.